Good morning, everybody. At 10:00 AM, we're going to call to order our Tuesday, May 3rd Board of Commissioners meeting. Would you please arise, if able, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will accept public comment for items that do not appear on our agenda. Is there any public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, as each item is under consideration, we will offer the opportunity for five minutes of public comment. Move into any additions to our agenda, anything that we need to add today?
Good.
All right. We'll look for a motion to approve our minutes, the set of minutes that we have for today's meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes from April 26th, Board of Commissioners meeting and April 12th work session.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion needed on the minutes? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. The motion is carried. Okay. We're going to be moving into our ordinance section now, and we will welcome up Ralph Stewart, who is the Borough Manager of the Borough of Bellefonte, where our county seat is located and county government resides.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Ralph, we're happy to have you here today to discuss something that's known as ALERTA for the Borough of Bellefonte. We're excited about this. We want to turn the floor over to you to discuss a little bit about the thinking behind this from the borough's standpoint and a little bit about what other entities throughout the area might have been done, have done with this and the benefits for it. So we'll turn it over to you now.
Thank you very much. ALERTA, I'm sorry, a little bit of allergies.
No, no worries.
Trying to get through. ALERTA stands for Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance. In the 1970s, the state legislature approved various ALERTA acts. Some dealt with residential properties, some dealt with commercial and industrial properties. The programs are optional programs for municipalities, school districts and counties, and they're meant to incentivize redevelopment of properties in communities like Bellefonte. The program allows time for absorbing the increase in the tax assessment associated with an improvement in the cost of a project. The, the program only applies to the increased assessment value associated with the project. We're looking at a 10-year schedule of abatement. The borough is facing some economic challenges, which is the reason we're looking at this. We have very small geographic footprint. The tax base really is not growing much in the last number of years. We have many older properties, many older buildings that are in need of improvements. We, as you know, we lost some major properties in the borough, including the Bush House. In that area, we've started a redevelopment project after 2006, when the Bush House was lost. That, this pro, this program would cover that type of development as well. We, in view of our economic challenges, we started a, to look at what we could do. And the borough in 2021 completed a strategic management plan, which in that plan identified really two major goals. One was to try to increase revenues. The second one was to create an ALERTA program. In January of this year, January 18th, Bellefonte Borough held a, a public hearing to take input on a proposed ALERTA district. We, at the time, we proposed a borough-wide ALERTA district, and then after discussions with school and county officials, we decided to still keep the district borough-wide, but reduce the, the application of the program. So at this point, the draft ordinance and the ordinance that was adopted excludes single-family properties, duplex properties, short-term rental properties, and bed-and-breakfast properties. The ALERTA program does not, cannot be used for demolition of any property. All applicants must receive all necessary permits and approvals to maintain eligibility in the program. The program would start after the improvement, the year, the tax year following the improvement. The program is capped at accepting five applications per year. That number can be increased by concurrence with the three taxing bodies. The minimum investment is $75,000. Ordinary maintenance and upkeep does not qualify for the program. Applicants must be current and stay current with all taxes and fees. The actual costs of the improvement have to be verified by a Pennsylvania-registered design professional. Bellefonte Borough adopted their ALERTA ordinance on April 4th of this year. The Bellefonte Area School Board adopted their resolution on April 26th of this year. And we're here to, from, and I'm here on behalf of Bellefonte Borough Council to respectfully request the Center County Board of Commissioners to adopt a similar piece of legislation and join in on our ALERTA program for the borough. Happy to answer any questions, but thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Ralph. We appreciate it. We appreciate the, the visioning that you and your team and the borough has done, the Borough Council has done over the last several years, to not only just say, hey, let's do ALERTA, but actually have that backed up by a strategic plan. That's important. So this isn't just coming out of the sky. It's something that other municipalities across the state have done to their success, and there really are a lot of projects principally in some of the areas around the waterfront that really could benefit from this. I think we may hear from some of those folks a little bit later on. But really, this is really something that's really going to help with the continued revitalization and investment in Bellefonte. And 10 years from now, the taxes will be at 100%, and they'll be on the rolls, and that'll be a lot of investment that'll be coming into the county, township, or I should say, the borough, and also the school district as well. So appreciate this very much. We'll accept any other thoughts and I, feedback now.
Sure, Ralph. So a quick, quick review. This is for rehabilitation, major remodeling, and building perhaps on vacant property.
Yes.
As you mentioned, demolition of historic buildings is not included, encouraged, or rewarded
Correct.
under this ordinance.
Correct.
Also, Commissioner Pipe alluded to it. The, the schedule, I believe, is the first year. It's 100% rebate on the in, potential increase in the property taxes. Year five, it's, I think, 50%, and by the time you hit your 10, it's, you're paying the full
Yes.
increase.
Yes.
So also, just want to mention that, you know, if you already have a property tax on the property, which I'm sure you do, there's no abatement on that base number.
That's correct. The base is always paid throughout the program.
Yes. So the base is always paid. It's, the ALERTA just applies to the increase in value based on the assessment of the Center County Board of Assessors.
Yes.
So as Commissioner Pipe mentioned, this is good news for Bellefonte. This will hopefully help continue the revitalization of Bellefonte Borough, and hopefully by extension, maybe even greater Bellefonte.
Thank you very much.
Sounds good. Thanks, Ralph.
Thank you.
Well, I think we're all pretty aware that essentially Bellefonte, like many communities, have, have built out about as much as they can. So the only thing we, we can do as, as a community is figure out how we can revitalize, rejuvenate, and upgrade
Yes.
the facilities and the, the properties that are there. And this is an opportunity, I think, for, for the borough, the county, and the school district to all, you know, join, join together to see that occur, because I, I think, as, as we all know, your expenses continue to go up.
Yes.
And this is an opportunity for the long-term vision of Bellefonte to be very bright. And you've, we've already got so many great things happening that this is just one more shining light that will encourage people to, to revitalize and regroup. And I'm very excited to hear from Team Songer here to what, what some of the project, projects that they have in the, in the future that may not only benefit from this, but will benefit the entire community. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So thank you, Ralph, very much. And just to give you a little bit of feedback, we wanted to, if Margaret could provide just a timeline of this, because this is not the approval of it. Actually, today, we're going to approve the advertisement of the ordinance, but it will come back to us within a certain amount of weeks.
Yes. The county is required to legally advertise the ordinance for a period of 10 days. The advertisement will be placed on Thursday, May the 5th, and the Board of Commissioners will consider adoption of the ordinance on Tuesday, May the 17th.
Thank you very much. Wonderful. Thank you.
So in two weeks, we'll be voting on final approval. So just to let everybody else know, we, if there's any other thoughts on this, we'll have it on our agenda for the 17th as well, if there's any other thoughts on this. But, so, anything else, Ralph, that you'd like to add before we open it up to public comment on this?
I'm thankful for your partnership on this. Thanks very much.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you, Ralph. Okay, at this time, we'll open the opportunity for any public comment at this time on this matter. Yeah, please. And if you would be willing, goes without saying, however, but just for the record, if you wouldn't mind, Tom.
Not to put any pressure on you, but we really want to hear about it.
And we ask this of everybody, your name and the municipality you reside in.
My name's Tom Songer.
Thank you.
I'm with the Toron Group and State College. And my partner in the Bellefonte Waterfront Project is Mark Marath, who has a long career in hospitality management, having, currently managing about 15 hotels, five restaurants. And Mark and I have been working with Ralph and the borough and many good people in the borough on this project for almost 10 years now. It's taken a lot of time and effort, and I can remember back when we first started thinking about this, Mark and I, and I went and talked with Ralph about the thought being that you had to build a flood wall in order to get the land out of the floodplain so you could develop it. And I wasn't able to undertake that, because I knew it would take a considerable amount of finances and government grants to, to make that happen. But anyway, that started our relationship with the borough. And the borough did proceed to acquire the properties. There were three properties there. They acquired the three properties. They selected an engineer to that done. They applied for grants from the state. Were successful in that. And what you see there today now enables us, who now own the property, to move forward with a visionary project for Bellefonte. And I, I can't say that enough, because it really is about enhancing what we have, the opportunity to do there, in terms of building a hotel, boutique hotel. It's going to have 80 rooms, farm-to-table restaurant on the first floor, meeting rooms on the second floor. There'll be a balcony on the second floor overlooking Spring Creek. The, the rooms will be on floors two through, or three through five, and it's going to be nationally branded. So this isn't just going to be, you know, your typical budget hotel. It's going to be, have, have really good aesthetics. And that's important to us, too, is that whatever we do, and we've always said this, and we sincerely believe it, that we have to have the architecture complement historic Bellefonte. Okay? And on that note, I'm pleased to say that we recently were before the Historic Review Commission of the borough. Our architect made a great presentation, and our plans were approved so that we could move forward. One, one of the things that COVID has slowed us down, like has slowed everybody down, and it's still impacting our project, but, but the one thing, we never gave up thinking about ways to improve the project. So one of the ideas we came up with, and we're going to implement it, is we're going to have a rooftop experience on the hotel. So you'll have panoramic views of all of Bellefonte from up there. And there'll be both indoor and outdoor seating. Indoor seating will be about 100 people. You'll actually be able to order food up there as well as libations. And, and it's really important to us, as far as, back to the farm-to-table restaurant for a moment, that we develop relationships with the local agricultural community and the local people who provide beverages. Okay? We have a lot of, of brew pubs now and, and breweries, cideries, wineries, and spirits. And we're going to work with all of those to help them market, you know, their products. And, and we're very sincere about that. So if you've seen the plans on the project, you'll, you'll notice that there's a promenade all the way from High Street to Lamb Street. It's a public, open space. It's quite wide, and it's going to be an area where even you could do special, some special events in the future. The meeting rooms in the hotel will provide the opportunity for special events also. Weddings, there's a number of weddings every summer in Tallyrand Park. Hopefully, some of those weddings, those people will choose to have their reception, you know, in the hotel going forward. The other thing that's very important in the hotel, or anything that we build, is energy efficiency. So the building is, is going to include the latest in green technology and, and low-cost operating, or low, low-cost operating cost is very important to us and the project as a whole, because you can build whatever, but if you can't afford to operate it, what have you really got? So it's very important to us that, for the, and for the comfort of our guests, that we have a very energy-efficient building. It's got the latest in HVAC technology, and we're incorporating that into our plans. The second building will be a parking garage. It'll hold 333 cars. The first floor will be 25,000 square feet of commercial space that will go to, be rented out to various small businesses. Okay? And we already have, some people have called us, and we've met with them, and, and we're in discussion stages relative to new businesses coming into Bellefonte. And that's the other thing we like about Bellefonte. It's a small historic community and lots of storefronts that are, for the most part, filled. And we don't have to go very far to, up the street here, that we see a lot of vacant commercial space. I never thought I would see that in downtown State College, but, but it's true. It's there. And, and people, I think, are looking for the opportunity to come to Bellefonte. So anyway, also, one of the things that we came up with during our little hiatus because of COVID was residential condominiums attached to the parking garage facing Spring Creek. So we're going to have, on floors two through six of the parking garage, we're going to have three, six, five floors of condominiums, and, and each floor will have three condominiums. There'll be a one-bedroom, a two-bedroom, and a three-bedroom condominium in, in that section of the, the parking garage. Building three, right across from the Gamble Mill, next to Lamb Street, that's going to have 15,000 square feet of commercial on the first floor. And above that, floors two through six, will be seven condominium units per floor. Those condominium units will be two- and three-bedroom. And I have to say that I'm really pleased with the response we've been getting to the condominium units. There are a lot of people who want to come to Bellefonte to live in a maintenance-free environment. Some of those may be second homeowners who one day will retire here, but the important thing is there's interest, a lot of interest. And there again, all the residential units will be high-quality construction of low-energy usage, and people will have the opportunity to choose how they want to finish their units. So if you want cherry cabinets in your kitchen, or you want LVT floors, or you want carpet, whatever, lighting, plumbing, we can, we're going to basically customize those units. So that enables us to really meet with people beforehand, before we actually even start that building, and, and get to know people, and, and introduce them to Bellefonte if they're, if they're not familiar with Bellefonte, and actually build a home for them that will enable them to have a high-quality, maintenance-free lifestyle. And we, and we've, some of the discussions we've had, people have said, we want to be on the waterfront. We want to be where there's things happening. We want to meet new people who are going to come to the hotel. Yes, Michael?
No, that's okay. We're about eight minutes now.
Okay.
That's okay.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
Anyway, so, so anyway, that's just a brief overview. You can get on our website, www.bellefontewaterfrontproject.com for additional information. And we're really excited about it. Our challenge now, our biggest challenge is, in these trying times, is how do we build it affordably? I mean, affordably from the standpoint of everything is costing a lot of money nowadays to build whatever. So anyway, that's a brief overview. Feel free to contact me if you have any other questions. But we really are very appreciative of the relationships with the county, with the borough, with the school district, and helps, the, the ALERTA opportunity will help us significantly in startup. But one, and we're going to employ probably more than 200 people here when the project is done. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And we do want to mention that you and Mark had corresponded us, with us via written communication outlining a lot of the positives about the ALERTA program. That was helpful in our decision-making as well, and so looking forward to a groundbreaking, hopefully, in the
Yep.
near future. So
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank, thank you for, thank you for an update on the project, Tom.
Yeah.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Absolutely. Absolutely. Okay. Any other public comment on ordinance one of 2022? Okay, we're seeing none. All right. We'll look for then a motion.
Motion to approve advertisement of ordinance number one of 2022.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. Thank you very much again, Ralph.
Thank you.
Tom, Tom, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Talk to you soon.
Absolutely. We have two proclamations today. Our first one is for Corrections Employee Week, which we are currently in. We're going to welcome up our warding, Chris Shell, Melody Gordon, who is the Deputy Warden of Operations, and Glenn Irwin, who is the Deputy Administrator of Administration at the Center County Correctional Facility. Good morning to you all.
Good morning, everyone. We are here, I feel like I'm a little short. We are here for Proclamation 15 of 22, proclaiming May 1st through the 7th of 2022, a correctional employee week in Center County. Just have a little, little bit here to read. As COVID-19 pandemic has had an impact on nearly every aspect of our lives, going, going into the third year, it's allowed us to take a look at some of the people who are critical to our society, but may be overlooked at times. This week, May 1st through the 7th, I want to shine a spotlight on correctional staff, especially Center County Correctional Facility. When COVID-19 hit Center County roughly March of 2020, some community members worked from home, laid off, or had split schedules. Our correctional staff and correctionals workers across our wonderful country tied their boots a little tighter and continue to go to work each day and every day. As community levels increases, as did some positive cases happen in the correctional facility, our staff worked directly with the positive cases. When Huntington County Jail was unable to man their facility due to COVID, Huntington reached out to us for assistance. Being in corrections, some might not understand the bond we have from our facilities to one another. It's family, brothers and sisters in corrections. We did not blink an eye to assist. With board approval, not, with Board of Inspectors not of approval, one question was asked, can we do this in a safe manner? I had faith in my team, staff, to take this challenge. We received 35 positive cases. We were able to contain these in one unit and during, and thereafter. We did not have any returning citizens nor staff positive. In the proclamation, President Ronald Reagan stated, "The duties of these officers have become increasingly complex, demanding." This is so true even to times today. Our brothers and sisters working in corrections have, have to deal with physical, emotional demands upon, made upon them daily, and work in a tough environment, even without COVID. There are always threats of violence and the need of vigilance. At some, at the same time, these dedicated employees attempt to improve the living conditions and assist in the returning citizens' rehabilitation in hope of them not to recidivate. We appreciate the daily dedication of our Center County correctional staff continues to put in each day. I am very proud of each of our correctional staff and pleased to stand shoulder-to-shoulder with them as correctional family.
Thank you, Warden. Thank you very much. Melody, Glenn, anything else to offer?
I would just like to recognize it's the 38th year of this celebration. It was proclaimed in 1984 by President Reagan. In addition to our staff, we have the 1,348 staff members at Rockview and Benner that have about 3,400 inmates there. So we always share that proclamation and this honor with our good friends and colleagues across the road there.
Absolutely. It's just nice to recognize the often unseen and unknown correctional staff. People drive by the facility every day, but don't usually, unless they have family that work there, they don't know who the, the staff are, you know? It's just nice to see some recognition for the staff.
Absolutely. So I thank you all for being here today, taking the time. We know things are still churning and busy at the facility. Each of the commissioners, we serve on the prison Board of Inspectors that you alluded to, Chris, and even throughout the, you know, even prior to the pandemic, I should say, we've always had, had a tremendous amount of confidence in the three of you and your team. And it comes from not only experience in corrections, whether it be state, and other counties, or here in Center County, there really is a dedication to the craft that you have, the professionalism that you have. And I don't think every correctional facility was able to survive COVID like we were here, really. When we talk with other counties throughout the Commonwealth, our conferences, they, we, we just, we, we don't, we don't brag, but we know that we were really blessed to have you three at the helm, and we've come through. And so this opportunity to celebrate our, these seven days, we know there's fun festivities, really impressing on the fact that we really care about all of the folks up there, from the kitchen staff to the facilities, the correctional officers, intake, everybody up there, really is a team. The counselors really makes it happen. So again, thank you for what you do, what you have done, and what you will do here for us as a county. Thank you.
Commissioner Pipe stated it very well, but the commissioners are proud of the facility. We're very lucky to have such a strong management team and staff. As Commissioner Pipe mentioned, in addition to the corrections officers, we have kitchen staff, we have counselors, we have people who work with the facilities, and the contractors, all of the volunteers that you work with. It's an entire team, not just the core team of nearly 100, but an additional 100-plus between your suppliers and all of the volunteers. So we very much appreciate what all the staff do there, and thanks for keeping everybody safe during the pandemic.
I think it's, it's worth noting that one of the things that we are most proud of, and obviously, the, the corrections officers have a, a big part of, of, of operating the jail, as do you folks, but at the same time, you have an entire movement, if you will, of recidivism, trying to get people back into useful positions in the community. The returning citizens have had opportunities under your watch, under all three of your watch, that, that they've never had before. And that we've, we've had great partnerships, whether, you know, be Centerpiece or other folks in the community, the Prison Society that have actually worked together to really turn our jail into a model of, of how we can get people back. And, you know, when, when we built that facility a number of years ago, the idea was, okay, we're going to house 300 people in there, and that's what we thought it would grow to. And you've defied gravity in that regard. And we have literally probably half of what we should, if not less than that, because of the, the programs and the opportunities that the courts and the, and the corrections service have, have provided to our, our local community. And it really is a, a model for, for so many other things. And also, I think the central booking has been a, a great asset to our community. It gets the police back on the streets faster, and that's, that's an integral to what you do up there. So if you think of all the things that happen up there, and all the, all the services and all, you know, whether the, whether you're talking about somebody that might come in with a, with a substance abuse issue, or alcohol abuse issue, or somebody might have domestic violence issues, I mean, there's programs for them up there to, to work through those. And I think that's been very, very effective, and I think that our county has been the, the recipient of, of very good things because of it. So I just want to say thank you for, not just the day-to-day things that you do, but the long-term vision that you've, you've provided. So thank you, thank you all for all that.
You've each recounted to us at one time or another at a prison board meeting, or just through a conversation, that corrections has changed through your careers, each of you. And to be able to stay in a career, stay in a profession, and be able to adapt, change, and succeed, really takes strong individuals. And just want to hammer home, the correctional officers, all, you're our largest amount of employees in county government. And it's something that we really, really appreciate, and there's, there's never enough, I think, that we can do to say thank you. But this really is something that we want to give to you on behalf of us, but also share with the correctional officers. We know at a upcoming prison board, prison Board of Inspectors meeting, we're going to be celebrating some of inspectors meeting, we're going to be celebrating some of the employees of years for each of the shift overall. And so we're really excited to showcase them as well, and to hear what great things they've done as well. So today, we'll look for a motion to adopt this proclamation, and we'll also join you for some celebrations up at the facility this week as well. So please.
Looking forward to it, Chuck.
Motion to adopt proclamation number fifteen of 2022 proclaiming May first through seventh as Corrections Employee Week in Center County.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. The motion is carried. Okay, and we'll present this to you at this time? Thanks, Natalie. Thank you again, everybody. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks, Glenn. Take care, everybody. All right, we'll see you. Okay. For our next proclamation, we have proclamation sixteen of 2022. And this is proclaiming this month as Foster Care Awareness Month in Center County. And we have some amazing team members from our COAS office, and some of our, we want to highlight some of the partners in our community as well. So is Julia's, okay. Okay. Fair enough. Okay. So we'll turn it over to Leah to introduce everybody that's joined us today. I believe we have Julia and Hope as well.
Yes, we do.
Okay, great. Excellent. And so we'll turn it over to you for this important proclamation. Good morning to all of you.
Good morning. Thank you. Thanks for having us today. So with me, I have Hope Tressler and Julie Heverly, who are our foster home recruiters. So I'm going to talk a little bit about Foster Care Awareness Month, and then turn it over to them to talk about some of the new things we have happening this month. So May is a very important month for us, because it not only gives us the opportunity to publicly thank our foster parents, but also talk about our need for continuing to grow our foster care program. So we are extremely fortunate that we are one of the few counties that maintains our own foster care program. And we do that because we truly believe that in order to help our children and families succeed when they are unfortunately tasked with children needing to come into our care and custody, we want to be able to keep them within their community. That's going to help them be more successful with reunification. That's going to help them work through the trauma that they've experienced, and help them continue to grow and develop in a more positive manner. And so being able to have our own program allows us, one, to know our foster parents. So that helps us to be able to match them more with the children that are coming into care. But it also allows us to be able to make sure we're keeping those children tied to their community and being able to work closer with their family. We, right now, have about sixty families that we are currently licensed with to have children placed in their home. But when you take a look at that, that sounds really nice that we have sixty families, but we have over seventy kids currently in foster care. And we also, when you look at our families that we currently have licensed, a lot of those homes are already full, because we've been able to place children in their homes, or they have life circumstances that are happening, or different things that are going on for them, so they're not currently available. So that brings our pool of actual available foster homes to around twenty homes that we have right now. And when you look at those families, those families are typically, right now, available for children under the age of five. The hard part for us is that once children reach school age, that's when children really need to stay in their community, and that's where we don't have the homes available for them. So when we are talking about needing to recruit and have homes available for older children, most people think we're talking strictly teenagers. And although we need homes for teenagers, we need homes for children starting around age eight. Once they hit school age, that's where we are really struggling to keep those children within our community. So it's hard when you think about a second grader needing to leave their friends, their school, their community, all of their resources, and be placed outside the county. So wanted to, again, take the opportunity to thank our current foster families, because we are extremely fortunate for the number of children we are able to keep within our community. Our foster parents work diligently. They work hard to build relationships with the parents and other caregivers for those children. They work hard to make sure those children's needs are met, getting to school, daycare, visitation, therapy, all of those things that they need. And so without their partnership, we would not be able to meet the needs of our kiddos. So we truly thank them for that. But also wanted to spread the word that we are desperately in need of foster homes. And so with that, I'd like to have Hope or Julie, whichever, like to talk a little bit about some of our new recruitment this month.
Yes. So like Leah said, May is National Foster Care Month. And so this month, the Center County Foster Parent Program is launching a new recruitment campaign to increase the number of available homes. We're excited to get the word out that there is a very strong need in Center County for homes for school-aged children, older youth, and sibling groups. So in May, you're going to start to see a greater presence of our recruitment efforts in the community. So we have a brand-new logo we're going to introduce. It's on our lovely shirts we're wearing today. And when we stand up, you can check out the backs of them. We're going to be on the side of a cat bus, driving around in the central region, so you'll see us there. We are on a billboard in the Spikes outfield. It's already posted. It was posted last Friday, so you can see us out there. We, Hope and I, will also be at several Spikes games at a table, as well as other community events. We're looking to get at some farmers' markets and some other different things we're working on. We have a brand-new commercial that's going to be airing on Comcast starting this month, and that's going to run for at least six months, potentially longer. We have launched a new website, www.fostercentercounty.com. We're really excited about that. We've never had our own website, so there's tons of information on there for existing foster parents, as well as hopefully, folks that we're, you know, hoping to recruit. And we're going to have a greater social media presence on Facebook and Instagram, which is new for us as well. So we're very excited.
So very excited to kick off our new campaign in recruiting, and hoping that we can get more people involved with the foster care program. So even if you're not necessarily willing to open your home for a child in care, hopefully, that we can ask you to help support our foster parents in a different way. We have tons of supports through our contracted providers with Wardell and Associates, as well as the Youth Service Bureau, but also our partnership with the Pennsylvania Orphan Care Alliance, who provides a ton of support to our foster families. So we're very grateful for that as well. Yes. Thank you for that, Julia. So we had to do things a little bit differently. I know we've talked about COVID a little bit here before. So ordinarily, in May, we host a banquet that allows for our partners and our foster parents and our staff to all come together and publicly thank our foster parents and acknowledge some of the accomplishments of the program over the year. But with COVID and not quite being sure what was going to be safe for everyone, we chose, again, to not hold a formal banquet this year. So we are hosting a virtual banquet. So we've put some work, these folks here at the table have put a lot of work into having a recorded banquet that we're sharing with our foster parents, to acknowledge them and share remarks from folks, to be able to thank them for all that they have done, and have a banquet in a way. And then hopefully, next year, we'll be able to be back in person.
And they're all getting a new T-shirt. So you'll be seeing these T-shirts hopefully around the county. I know you gentlemen also.
We did, yes.
See memoratizations as well as Ms. Gray.
So thank you. We always enjoy hearing about foster parents and the work that's being done, because it is one of the things that is a tremendously difficult thing. But the amount of hope and positivity it inspires to hear that we have so many families in our community, but also recognize that there's more need, there's more help that's needed. But telling the stories of the tremendous successes we've had of kids who have been in foster homes but have gone on to really succeed, really thrive, is something that can be an amazing recruitment tool. And we have people in the community who are able to do this and willing. We just need to find them and connect them. So this advertising campaign, promotion campaign, is fantastic to hear. And so we'll support in any way we can. So thank you for leading on that. Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
I just wanted to stress, you're also taking volunteers for the support system, because it can, especially when the child is first placed with you, can seem a little bit overwhelming. But between the Orphan Care Alliance, the volunteers, the Youth Service Bureau, Wardell, we tried to wrap the new families in additional services. And then there are mentor families as well that can give advice. So want to congratulate the three of you and the entire staff on the great work you do. As you mentioned, it's critically important for these elementary school-aged children to be able to stay in their elementary school, if at all possible.
I just want to thank you for your, first of all, for the network you created.
Mark mentioned the Orphan Care Alliance, and I think that's just one of the elements in our community that kind of brings the public-private partnership together. And, you know, they're a faith-based organization, and has been very effective in bringing a lot of resources to the table for orphan care. And it's one of those things where the foster program in Center County, I don't even have, it's tremendous work that you do. It's very difficult work that you do. But at the same time, I can't imagine a world without you in it. So a lot of areas don't have the things that we have when it comes to putting all these, you know, knitting all these programs together. And I just want to say thank you for everything you do. And although it is a virtual event this year, hopefully, next year it'll be live, because it's a very touching, you know, when you hear the stories, and you see the love in the room, that's a real special time. I look forward to when we can all get together.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So we have a proclamation in front of us, and we'll look for a motion to approve it and adopt it at this time.
Motion to adopt proclamation number sixteen of 2022 proclaiming May 2022 as Foster Care Awareness Month in Center County.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion or questions? Any questions for, yeah, please?
Has the pandemic, has the last couple of years of pandemic closed in spite of challenges for the program?
Yes. It has, in terms of, especially at the peak of the pandemic, we had a lot of families that were hesitant to open their home, just because of the unknown. And then also, it just created a lot of uncertainty, and then not being able to predict whether or not schools would be in session, what daycare would look like, all of those things that go into caring for a child definitely created some concerns. And I think we're starting to see more families starting to come forward or be part of the process and consider becoming licensed now. That was definitely something we didn't see during the pandemic. Our number of new families were a little bit lower. We did have more kinship families, which is a fantastic part of the program, in that we are able to license people that have current existing relationships with their children to become licensed foster parents and support them in that way. But definitely, the pandemic did impact our recruitment and our retention, and then our ability to actually place children, for sure.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll look for, we did the motion and second. All of those in favor of adopting the proclamation, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, we'd like to present this to you at this time, please. Are you going to join us? No, okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we will head into some of our other items today, bids and proposals. We're going to welcome up Joni McIntyre, and we are going to hear about an update on our bond, but specifically how we're going to be working through the proposals for underwriting. So, good morning, Joni.
Morning. So this request is in regard to the bond issuance for Center Crest. The next step in the process is the authorization for Public Financial Management, the PFM group, to solicit information for the underwriting firms in connection with the upcoming issuance of General Obligation Bonds Series 2022.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. So in terms of the process that we took for our bond council, we did a similar approach, and we found that to be very helpful, where we did get some of the costs in under what we were expecting. And so hopefully, we'll find a similar pattern here with our underwriters. In terms of the timeframe, can you speak to that a little bit, in terms of when this will be solicited, when they're due back, when we would look at final decisions? Is it weeks, months? What's the timeline on that?
So PFM did provide a timeline, and they were looking at getting the solicitation for, go ahead, and getting the approval today, and then distribute the underwriting RFP, or the solicitation of the information around May, actually tomorrow, May fourth. They want to get this out very, very soon. And then information request back from the county on May ninth, and then also get this information to S&amp;P around May eighteenth. So they're looking at reviewing the underwriters the end of typically May twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and then the rating call to S&amp;P, and then the due diligence call for the underwriters the week of May thirtieth. So I guess the overview is to go ahead and get all this wrapped up, the price, the price bonds, the lock-in, the interest rates mid-June, and then finalize everything mid-July. So that's kind of the timeline that PFM is looking at.
Excellent. Thank you. So it sounds like we'll have in a matter of weeks the underwriter selected.
Yes.
And we'll be able to continue working with them. Okay, excellent. Okay. Any other questions for our authorization to solicit proposals? All right. This will keep the wheels on the tracks moving forward on this project, so we appreciate it, Joni. Thank you. We'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve the authorization of public financial management to solicit proposals.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any final questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. The motion is carried. Thank you again, Joni.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll welcome up Quentin at this time, and we're going to be discussing the contract award for our meals. Hi, Quentin.
Hi.
Okay.
So we have had one bid proposal for our home-delivered meal, congregate meal, and in-home meal program. And at this time, we're asking to table the contract award until May tenth. I just received the bid proposal, and I continue to be reviewing it right now.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, there's no rush on this. We have a few months left on the current contract. So, but in due time, we will look at awarding this, doing some more research. So we will look for a motion to table it for one more week until next week's meeting.
Motion to table the contract award until Tuesday, May tenth.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final, oh, please, any final discussion on this, or anything else you wanted to add, Quentin? Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion is carried. Okay, we'll see you next week. Okay? Okay. At this time, we will welcome up our sheriff to discuss the contract renewal.
Is the microphone on?
Oh, no, sure.
Steve.
Oh, Steve.
Can you move your mic back?
That's okay.
Don't get that on video for him.
That's okay. That's okay.
Good morning. I'm here to discuss the contract with Penn State University. It's just, it's kind of a renewal, but they changed a little wording in the contract, and we increased the reimbursement back to the county. So it went from, I think, forty-eight, fifty, up to sixty-six, sixty-six. It's just a year contract we're going to do yearly now with Penn State. That's all it is.
We appreciate that. It's a great service you provide. I think they reached out to us several years ago, and we were able to establish this agreement. And just, it's good. It's good stuff if they need help and need a little extra assistance. So thanks for your willingness.
They like working the games, and we usually send four to six deputies per game, so.
And the contract rate covers all the expenses.
It covers everything. We work with Margaret Gray and the other people who are involved in the process, covers everything for them.
I suspect you usually have a fair number of volunteers?
Yes, we do. Except towards hunting season, it dwindles down a little bit. But other than that, it was pretty good, so.
All right. Well, we appreciate you being here today, Sheriff, and the work that's done on this. We will look for a motion to add it to next week's consent.
Motion to add the contract renewal with the Pennsylvania State University next week's consent agenda.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion or questions on this? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion is carried. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
You too. Thank you, Sheriff. Okay. We're going to welcome up Ron Williams at this time to discuss our MOU for our weights and measures program. Good to see you, Ron.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I won't be bored. Eight minutes, my exolts.
No worries.
For people who don't know, my name is Ron Williams. I'm still here at Weights and Measures for Center County. In the year 2021, it department inspected 1,520 fuel pumps and 676 commercial and non-commercial scales. This includes routine inspections and reinspection of rejected units. These numbers will increase in the years to come with continued business growth in county. So I am here today to present a MOU between the Department of Agriculture and Center County Government. This action will continue authorized jurisdiction to conduct certain weights and measure inspections in Center County for the period of July 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2027. Okay?
So, Ron, we really appreciate and love the service you do for Center County. And it's one of those things that I think benefits almost nearly everybody who visits us, travels in here, really benefits from the work that you do. But it's such an unsung and underappreciated sometimes, and we take it for granted. But we really appreciate the work you do. And you're one of the few counties, as you know, who we still do it locally. It's not It's not the Department of Ag. We really treasure this, the fact that we can have this be done by somebody who's here in Center County, knows our community and has developed amazing relationships with the people that you inspect and work with. And we hear nothing but good things about the work you do, so we're excited to have this for a few more years. And again, thank you for all the work you do. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for the comments.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Thanks, Ron. Whenever I go to the gas pump, I always look to make sure that there's a little red Center County seal because when I buy, you know, five gallons of gas, 10 gallons of gas, I want to make sure that's what I'm actually receiving.
Absolutely. Thank you.
More importantly, where is the cheap gas? That's...
No idea, Steve.
I just appreciate the fact that, as Mark indicated, you know, when you see the, when you see the pump tell you, you got a gallon of gas, you actually got a gallon and you keep everybody on point and, you know, keep the system honest and that's wonderful and I'm glad we've got it.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Great partnership with you and the state, so thank you.
We'll look at this time for a motion.
Motion to add the MOU with the Department of Agriculture to next week's consent agenda.
Seconded. And seconded. Any final questions, please, Gary?
Does your office get more calls when gas prices go jump?
Oh, yes. Yeah, I've gotten quite a few. Once it hits the $4 mark, you know, I get, my phone rings and I get in trouble because the pumps are usually right and they're wrong and they don't believe me, but that's okay. But yeah, I do get a few.
We appreciate the additional, or we thank you again, doubly thank you for the additional calls that you're getting, so.
Oh, that's...
Absolutely. Well, thank you, Ron.
Great, thank you.
Seeing no further questions, we'll call the question. All those in favor of the MOU being moved to next week's consent agenda, say aye. Aye. The motion is carried. Okay, thank you again. Welcome Faith and Quentin back up. And this is going to be approving the four agreements that we have with providers. So again, we're excited to see so many and we'll turn it over to Faith and Quentin.
Okay, so this is our last time here with you in regards to the Homemaker Options Program so that we can move forward. We did vet the four RFP responders well. We did contract negotiations and ultimately came out with four contracts to present to you today with Arcadia, Help Mates, Caregivers America, and Angels On Call, the last two, Caregivers America and Angels On Call being our newest to the team. We are looking to have a flat rate of $22 an hour. We'll let Quentin talk a little bit more about consumer choice and why we went in that direction, but what's really exciting is that we're hoping to continue quality of service, but really only seeing about a dollar to a dollar and 60 an hour increase, so it's not a huge budget impact for us for the next three years.
I also want to say that all the proposals were very well done and as far as the rate, we looked at consumer choice as a really important thing for our older adults and our other people who need services in Center County. So looking at it that way, both of our programs have a cost share, which there's a financial component to it. So we wanted to basically take that component out and we came with a rate that was the same for all of them, so now an older adult or disabled person looking for services can truly look at consumer choice and decide which of the providers they want to provide without considering the financial cost. So we thought that was important.
Thank you both very much. Any questions or comments on these four items?
No, it sounds good.
Okay. We are excited to be able to continue this service and again, have more options for our citizens and residents, so this is great. Thank you for all the work on this. Appreciate it. It's a long road. We appreciate it. So this will set us up for the next three years. We'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve the items one through four for the Office of Adult Services and Office of Aging for the Homemaker Services/Options Program.
Well, seconded, and I have a question. Just out of curiosity, whenever you, you know, we have options, I mean, that's fantastic, but what happens, in other words, if one of these providers fills up or can't provide all the services that are requested of them, is there another type of process to go to the next available person or, you know, how does that work?
So basically, if we have a provider and we have someone who needs services, to give you the example of, if we have somebody who, we basically go out to each of the providers and then we request to them to provide services for them. And then basically at that point, we get the consumer choice from the older adult and then we go in the list of who they want us to contact and then we, to see if they have any services available for that person. And then if we would, like what we've had in the past because of the lack of aids, if we have somebody who is unable to serve them and then they're sitting there on a provider waiting list, we're calling them every two weeks and we're giving out the list of the names and then, because they're consistently hiring new people, keeping it in mind that we have people who we need to serve. So we're hoping to have that wait time for if somebody doesn't have an aid to be shorter because we're continually asking them to provide services. So, and the hope is with the four providers, there'll be less of that of an issue and hopefully we can get everybody off of all the waiting lists and we'll be able to provide for anybody who needs.
Staffing's always a challenge and I'm sure it's particularly a challenge in the service community as a, so, but thank you.
The thing that we'll do as well between our departments is if we're struggling to make a match, sometimes it's location of the consumer and where the aids actually are. So we've had a couple of successful situations in the past couple of years where we were able to like really kind of look at a map and look at where people lived between our departments and try to match up services and change days and times that the same aid was going out there and able to get as many hours as they possibly can for the benefit of them as the employee, but then also to the benefit of our departments as well. So that's one of the really treasured and awesome things about our departments working together is it's not just about having a shared contract and shared monitoring, is that we look at all of our clients as all of our clients. Our office oftentimes and continues to evaluate and assess folks to see if they're eligible for waiver, options, home delivered meals, and really taking into consideration that we have an aging population in our program as well. So it's been a really good partnership.
I was just going to say that cooperation is very cherished, so thank you.
As the fifth largest geographic county in Pennsylvania, we often forget that, but when we're serving, you know, east, west, north, south, it is, it's good to have geographic coverage and have, again, additional service providers, so this is great. Okay. We have the motion seconded. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay. All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. The motion is carried. Thank you both again. We're going to just keep it with Quentin for one more item.
So I'm here to ask for sponsorship of the Aging Children, Children and Aging Parents Program. It's a program, it's a nonprofit program. It provides a variety of educational programs to offer information, resources, support and community to adult children who are caring for aging parents and for local content experts, survey speakers, local businesses provide resources. I think one of the toughest jobs is caring for a person.
We may do a mic, we may do an audio adjustment, Quentin. Now, let's, we'll bear with us just one second, yeah.
Hello?
And you can, yeah, you can bring it up. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I think one of the toughest things, job for someone to do is to care for a dependent person and I think they provide valuable information for people who are caring for dependent people. I've actually presented several times to this organization and have learned a lot myself from other speakers while I was there, so I think it's a great program. They have approached me with losing their sponsorship due to COVID and asked that we would sponsor them for the next year.
Fantastic. Any questions or comments on this? Okay. Thank you for bringing it before us, Quentin. We'll look for a motion.
Motion to add the sponsorship with adult children of aging parents to next week's consent agenda.
Seconded. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. The motion is carried. Okay, thank you once again. Appreciate it. Okay, at this time, we're going to welcome up Dave and we have some vehicles that we're going to be considering moving forward for purchase. Good morning, Dave.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me. I come before the board today asking for approval to place orders for vehicles for the following departments. These vehicles would be purchased through the Co-Stars Program of Pennsylvania and it would be from the Hoffman Ford dealership in Harrisburg who we've partnered ship with many a times before. The first one would be a 2022 Ford Explorer Interceptor fully equipped for our sheriff department. The cost of that vehicle direct is $36,365 with the additional features we need to equip it with would be $10,904.52 for the installation of equipment from Center Communications, radios, a cage and various items, and then from Able signs locally here for $1,000 for signage for the decals for the sheriff. The second one is a 2022 Ford F-150 truck at the cost of $49,500 for our emergency management agency. We have taken that vehicle out of service that our deputy EMA director had used back in 2020. During the pandemic, she didn't need, have as much of a need, but now it's becoming more apparent. It gives them a vehicle to respond and much needed. The third would be a 2022 Ford Escape at a cost of $26,245 for our CYS Children Youth Department. We lost a vehicle this early spring in the winter in an accident. Thank goodness, no one was hurt, but the vehicle was beyond repair. So we have insurance money from that and the balance of that cost would come from our human services block grant funding to pay for that. The final one is a 2022 Ford Escape at a cost of $26,750 for the Office of Aging. I was approached by Director Birchfield about the potential of getting them a new vehicle. They had some funding that they can, that's designated for such needs available that they need to expend and we were able to come within what they had available with that purchase. So I'm asking for you to approve these future purchases. We can place the orders and get them here. The total cost is $150,764.52 and everything is budgeted and funded throughout 2022 as we see it, so. Unfortunately, Penn State vehicles are not available right now and, you know, we would normally look for that and, you know, we're just in a situation where they're not available. They're not getting them quick enough to turn them over and hopefully soon, but, you know, it may be a while, so we're trying to keep our fleet up to where we need it to be.
Understood. Thank you, Dave. And it looks like the only one from this list that isn't, is funded with general fund money is number one. We had, and we had talked about that during the budget process and included it in here, but again, we're using EMA funds to pay for that vehicle that really has a narrow category for what we can utilize on.
Yes.
CYS and Aging, both human service entities are able to get funding there, so this is great. But we know the sheriff was in need for a specific new type of vehicle and we talked it through with him and you, so, great. So we're excited to see these in front of us, I think. Is there any questions or comments for Dave? Okay, we look for a motion.
Motion to add the transportation items one through four to next week's consent agenda.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. Motion is carried. Thank you, Dave, very much. Thank you. Okay, welcome up Natalie for an agreement with the AIDS Resource Center, I'm sorry, Alliance. Good morning, Natalie.
Good morning. So on behalf of the Drug and Alcohol Office, this is a referral agreement between the AIDS Resource Alliance and our county department for the term of two years from May 10th, 2022 to May 10th, 2024. This is an important referral agreement that we have with them in terms of mutual individuals that we would serve, particularly individuals who use injectable drugs, to make sure, right, that we have that support system for them that the AIDS Resource Alliance provides. The Department of Drug and Alcohol really encourages the fact that we can have an agency such as AIDS Resource Alliance in our community that we can have a partnership with. So this agreement just outlines that we can do a referral process for our interested individuals.
Thank you, Natalie. Any questions or comments?
Long-term, great relationship.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, we'll look for a motion.
Motion to add the referral agreement with the AIDS Resource Alliance to next week's consent agenda.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. The motion is carried. Thank you, Natalie. Thank you. Okay. We'll welcome up Raimi at this time for our contract with Vertiv. Good morning, Raimi. How are you?
Good morning. Today I have a contract for consideration with Vertiv Corporation. This is going to be to replace 40 batteries for uninterrupted, and that's a word I cannot say, uninterruptible power system. The contract total is $17,221.40. It includes the new batteries, installation by an authorized technician, recycling of the old batteries and freight for the new batteries.
Raimi, for context, I may be wrong on this, but the UPSs are located where, Willabank, at the tower sites, where all of the...
They're, the one that we're requesting for this one is in the basement with, like, with where 911 is.
Okay.
Like, it's in our equipment room.
So there'll be 40 of them there?
Forty batteries inside of the unit, yeah.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Yep.
All right. Certainly important. Okay. That's, yeah, absolutely. Okay, we'll look for a motion then.
Motion to add the contract with Vertiv Corporation to next week's consent agenda.
Seconded. And seconded. Any final discussion or questions? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have one item that is specifically for our ITS and we'll welcome up Chad at this time. Hi, Chad.
Good morning. Today I have a contract for consideration. It's through CDWG for Cisco Duo Security. This application, of course, provides the county with their two-factor authentication platform. Two-factor authentication is one of the layers that we use to enhance our cybersecurity posture and keep our accounts and our data safe in the county. So the contract total is for one year for $18,360.
Okay, thank you, Chad. Any questions or comments on our Duo Security renewal?
I just want to say thank you. I know these are times that, particularly now, cybersecurity is in the forefront of our concerns and you've done a tremendous job, your whole team, of making sure that we're protected and I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Chad. I'm always reading county news about another county and another municipality that did have an incident.
Yeah.
Thanks for keeping us safe.
Absolutely. Okay. All right, we'll look for a motion at this time then.
Motion to add the contract renewal with CDWG for Cisco Duo Security to next week's consent agenda.
Seconded. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. The motion is carried. Okay, and we have a records management item as well, so I don't know if we're going to welcome up Tony or Tracy?
Bring up Tracy.
Oh, Tracy. Okay, great. Okay. Good morning, Tracy.
Good morning. It's been a while since I've been here.
Yeah, it's nice, it's nice to see you. How is records?
It's good.
Okay, okay.
I'm here today to consider approval of the destruction of county records from the following departments. Financial Management, Risk Management, Tax Assessment, Transportation, the Treasurer's Office, District Judge Loughman, and Human Resource, Domestic Relations, the Controller's Office, and our Central Counties Youth Center. All of these records are, they exceed the Pennsylvania Historical Museum date, so they're up for destructions. There's about 155 of the boxes total. And this is just my end-of-the-year procedure, so.
What are you going to do with all the space? Bad subject, huh? Be able to walk now.
Yeah, we wish there was more space.
So we have, our records policy indicates that sort of the last step before we destroy the records or and shred them based on, you know, got the best guidance out there in terms of how we destroy them. We take precautions to recycle or destroy in the safest way. But the final step is us as, just giving final approval. And we've documented that each of the departments or the elected officials, heads of each of these entities, has signed off on the documents as well. You've also signed off on them as well, so everything is in order. And so we're just the final step before we actually destroy them, so. Any questions before we do so?
Nope.
All right, we'll look for a motion to add it to next week's consent agenda.
Motion to add the destruction of county records that have exceeded record retention guidelines to next week's consent agenda.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion, questions? Thank you again, Tracy. Appreciate it. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion is carried. Okay. We have today's consent agenda in front of us. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion is carried. Okay, Commissioner Higgins will turn it for the check run.
Sure, a little smaller than average check run of $999,068.71. We have a series of checks to the Center for Community Resources totaling $48,022 for a variety of mental health walk-in, mental health mobile, and mental health phone support services for the month of March. Just did want to highlight that the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania's highest priority this year is an increase in mental health funding from the state because that's where the counties receive most of their funding fund to provide these services. So important topic, I just wanted to raise that again since it is our largest priority at the county level in Pennsylvania. Would like to make a motion to approve the check run data April 29.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, and to that point, we'll be adopting a resolution in the coming weeks, supporting that priority and talking about some local data. So we have that slated for a few weeks from now, so absolutely. But thank you for highlighting those checks. Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the check run. All those in favor of approving it, say aye. Aye, motion is carried. Okay. We do have one consideration for a CNET request, and this is for the 23rd anniversary of the Ron and Mary Maxwell Community Spelling Bee. And it's hosted by Midstate Literacy Council, upcoming in September. But we just want to look for a motion to broadcast the sponsorship, or to sponsor the broadcast of this fun event. Would there be a motion? That's right, I don't, yeah.
Motion to approve sponsorship of the CNET request from the Midstate Literacy Council.
Moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, motion is carried. Okay, we'll turn it to Commissioner Dershowitz for a voter registration report.
Okay, we do have one this morning. It is, let's see, we have 105,056 registered voters in Center County. That's made up of 43,966 Democratic voters, 147 Green Party, 654 Libertarian, 14,104 No affiliation, and 42,369 Republican voters. And when you add the 3,816 other party folks, you get the total of 105,056, and that's down three from last report. The feature party of the week is the Apple Juice Party. And the Apple Juice folks have one registered voter in Center County, and we want to recognize them. The feature precinct of the week is precinct number 62, which is miles east, which votes at the Fire Hall in Reversburg. And in the last election, they had a total registration of 510 voters. 192 ballots were cast, and the percentage voter turnout in the last election was 37.65%. And the folks that make it happen in precinct 62, the judge of elections is Juliana Holm. The minority inspector is Susan Rudy. The majority inspector is Ralph Rudy. And the clerks are Mark Holm and Carol Vedder-Ripka. And again, thank you to the fire company for allowing us to use the facility down there.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. And our registration deadline passed yesterday, and is this the, these are the final numbers?
Yes, this is the, this is the final total. Yep, that is it as we, as we speak.
Okay, so we're two weeks away. Is that right? Two weeks, wow, okay.
It's hard to imagine.
Okay, we, do we have any announcements today, announcements? Okay. We, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I can't even believe, this is, so we should say.
We do have an announcement.
Oh, we do have an announcement. But I should say, we have an administrator's report or section, but we should say this is, well, we have to put you on the spot for something, Margaret. This is your, this is Margaret's.
We are going to have an administrative report, one way or another.
Yeah, so we have, this is officially your last administrator report as administrator. And so we need to just once again share our thanks and appreciation. I'm so embarrassed that I skipped over it. I'm so embarrassed. But just coming back to it, Margaret, we've got some surprises this week as well, so we know that you love surprises. So we have some, we have some in store and.
Very well.
I know. So we have some in store, but we, and so we'll do them, we won't embarrass you in front of CNET and Gary, so, but we'll do that later on. But anyway, thank you for everything. We appreciate it.
Oh, I will.
Absolutely. You want to embarrass, okay, okay, okay.
I just want to say, I, I would be remiss if I didn't say that your six years with us has been. Has been pretty phenomenal, and you've done some just absolutely fantastic things for Center County. You've put a lot of things right, and you've initiated a lot of new projects, and you've shepherded the herd through some pretty tough times. And I know, I know there were times when you probably didn't think you were going to make the shepherding project work, but you did. And I just want to say thank you, and I think on behalf of all our staff and the citizens of Center County, thank you to your, for your service to us and here in Center County. And if you ever get bored and lonesome, we always have a, we always have a authority board or commission that needs some help that you can, you can lend a hand to, so. I know you're looking for things to do.
Just kidding. I've worked with tens of thousands of individuals in three states in multiple different industries. And you are the most capable and hardworking people I've ever had the honor to be on the same team with, Margaret. And there's some fresh cookies for you in my office.
We're not missing you yet, but we will at some point.
So we have some fun things planned for, to recognize Margaret with our team, so we look forward to the final week with Margaret, so. But announcements, we should, we should turn it over to you for that, yeah. Executive session to announce.
The Board of Commissioners met in an executive session on Thursday, April 28th, from 9:23 a.m. to 9:51, 9:51 a.m. to discuss a personnel matter.
Thank you, Margaret. Are we the balance of our public meeting schedule here? Well, Gary, floor is yours for any questions.
Pardon my eyes, each and every surprise you do have from Martin. Margaret, by the way, thank you.
Those are all a discussed in executive session, so we can't discuss them.
Has there been any follow-up from the developers or anybody else on the Belfont Warehouse project?
There hasn't. Their communication from, from Tuesday afternoon was essentially the plans have been pulled, and we've done an outreach to them to see if there's anything that we can debrief on because we'd like to know just a little bit about what their future plans would be, if they would return and reengage. And so we're, we're interested in that, so time will tell.
Tell you that, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Look for a motion to adjourn at this time.
Motion to adjourn at 11:15.
All in favor say aye. Aye, we're adjourned.